Hello everyone and welcome to the Get Growing Live Weekly Work Session from Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley and I'm super excited to have you here today. I want to start by coming over to the chat. We do have a little bit of a different format this week. For those of you who have been tuning in since the beginning of this series, where we're evolving and how we can kind of best accommodate both teaching concepts and really giving them their full time that they deserve, and then also being able to be here for you live and answer your questions, give you context and help you get those breakthroughs that you're really looking for to succeed in your business. So what I'm going to do right now, since this is not a specific, "I'm going to do a webinar for you" week, this is very much an open season, Ask Ashley Anything kind of session, I want to come over to the chat. First of all, welcome everyone, really glad to have you here. I am in Brooklyn, New York, and I would love to hear where you are tuning in from, wherever you are in the world. And go ahead and come over in the chat and let me know so I can see you. And then yeah, we have a couple of people who submitted questions ahead of time today that we will look at covering. And then of course, if you have questions as well yourself, I would be thrilled to work with you on them. Hey, what's up everybody? We've got Ontario and North Carolina, kind of all over the place. East Coast at least, all of us. April is here, hi April. I believe we are going to be coming out and talking together later on. She had a really good question that I think a lot of you will appreciate. Hello, in Michigan, Massachusetts, awesome, what's up guys? Alright, so yeah, today is open season, open question. If you want to go ahead, if you haven't submitted your questions already to me via email, you can actually go to the Q&amp;A button right here at the bottom of your Zoom screen and you can start adding your questions in there. Now today, we're going to be a little more loose than we would be otherwise. We're not just talking about the tech aspect of things, or obviously we want to put things in the context of how you can utilize the Get Oiling system to get better benefit from any particular approach that you take. But I am here today as someone who is a veteran of not only this industry, but of marketing and sales and training in these things for a number of years. And so I'm here today to help you with those things as well. So you know, if we get a little off of the tech stuff and more into prospecting or you know, just kind of general business building advice, I'm here for that too. So if you've got something that you would like to chat about, go ahead and submit that in the Q&amp;A and we will get going. I do want to make sure you guys can hear me well. I did forget to put my little AirPods in and I actually think I should go ahead and do that now, if you don't mind. And hopefully, this might improve the sound as well, especially for the recording. Okay, so just confirm for me real quick in the chat, you can hear me, and then we'll proceed. Sorry about that guys. Perfect, alright, fantastic. April, I believe I'm going to try to bring you on so that we can chat, because you had a really great question. Ahah, here we go. I've got you unmuted. If you would like to turn your video on, you're welcome to. Welcome, super happy to have you here.
Hey, I really don't even know how to turn this video thing on, so I'm sorry.
It's okay. So if you look in your Zoom screen to the bottom left, you should see a button there. But if you don't want to, no pressure, no worries.
Um, yeah, I really don't see it. I just.
No worries, no worries. So I know that you had, you know, kind of read out context in a paragraph form via email, but just to give everybody else a sense of, you know, where you're coming from, and I know it was more of a statement than a question, but it's fine. How would you phrase what you would like to talk about today?
So I believe the correct way to phrase it, I guess, is reorienting yourself as a newbie to the business.
Okay, and what do you mean by that, reorienting?
So I personally know that this process can be extremely overwhelming when people are just starting out and you are hearing all these little bits and pieces of information that you need to pay attention to and you need to jump on immediately and get started. However, I noticed that a lot of people just don't even understand what they're trying to do. They don't understand the terminology, they don't know, they don't know how to orient themselves to a small business where, I mean, for lack of a better word, there is inevitably a lot of ignorance for many of us.
Okay, this is great, this is such a great topic. So this would be breaking down sort of from a philosophical perspective, how we approach this business as someone who is new or as someone who maybe feels like they've strayed from the past and are, you know, really looking to make sure that they, you know, can see the success that they want to achieve. Now, I think that it's really important that you all understand, you know, for those of you who are brand new especially, this is not a business that's like any other business on the planet. The format, network marketing, right? And that's not even getting into the intricacies of Young Living specifically, which part of the reason why Young Living is such a massively successful, really truly one of the absolute best companies in the history of this industry for a number of reasons. But there is, when you have a company that's that size, that has this breadth of product range, and then also because of the nature of the products that you're dealing in, you also have some, you know, quite strict compliance rules in the US especially. And then of course, those change a little bit based on where you're, you know, you're doing, you're sharing, or where you're based and so on. So there's a lot. And the most important thing, if I could share a piece of advice with any newbie, period, or someone who's been around for a while, is ready to really get serious, but feels really overwhelmed, is that the best cure for overwhelm is activity. The best thing you can do is to keep moving, because when you stall, because that's kind of how overwhelm happens, right? Like you get so caught up in all of this information and I don't know how to even organize it, deal with it, disseminate it, whatever, then we stall and we're deer in the headlights and we're doing nothing. And doing nothing does nothing for our business, right? So the most important thing that you can do is focus on activity. Then, by extension, it's important to focus on the right activities. So the simplest way to approach this, and just for anyone who wants to reorient, is that income-producing activities, IPAs, are the most important actions you can perform. There's plenty of education that you can consume and that's something that you should expect to master over time, especially with the depth of information available on the products, the broad range of products that are available, that you're actually sharing with people, with Young Living. But to take this very simple, you need to perform your income-producing activities. Those are your actions, these are the things that you always, always, always need to be doing. And what that involves is not posting on Facebook, it's not even attending a webinar like this. What it involves is finding the simplest way possible to share all the time, right? And then to make sure that, so you're sharing an opportunity, right? I'm going to break this down into the four main IPAs. And there are trainings like this in your back office, Week 1 of the 90 Day Challenge. Please watch it, it goes into this in detail. And use your digital upline coach, because it will help you to focus on those activities. That's why it's built. First thing you gotta do is invite, 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 invite. And I can do an entire webinar on teaching you different ways that you can invite, but inviting people to review something that they don't know anything about yet, that you're excited about, that might change their life, invite. The second thing, expose. This means you're sharing, you're sharing Young Living. And not even necessarily sharing Young Living and its massive breadth, because that is going to be even more overwhelming to someone who is not personally invested in it like you are. Make it simple. If you have a Get Oiling website, just the standard website, you could simply share that, because there is so much information there. There's so many videos and articles and ways that they can pop off and even go over to the Young Living website, where when they decide to purchase something, it's coded to your Young Living member number. That's the simplest way to share. So invite somebody to check out your website that you just built, that you're super excited about. Really simple approach. Step 2, expose. Share that information with them so that they can dig through, you know, and this could also be inviting them to a presentation and you give the presentation, number of ways to do that. Again, could do a whole webinar on that. And then after explode, so it's invite, expose, and now close. So this is where we go and we ask someone to make a decision. Okay, and so when ideally, we've got that person who has signed up for their PSK and on essential rewards, we let them know, hey, you don't have to necessarily build a business like me, but I can help you get free product. Let's get you started sharing, really simply. I'll show you how to do it, again, really simply, just use a Get Oiling website, share the Get Oiling website that you have that's coded to you and that'll take you a long way, and then you repeat that process. So it's invite, expose, close, repeat. And obviously, get that duplicating, that's part of the repeat part. So if you ever need to reorient, you need to reorient around action. And that action being in the simplest way possible to repeat those four steps, because those are the most important activities that you can take. Now, when it comes to information and the things that you should prioritize learning, number one, your very first priority, if you don't have it already, is to have easily identifiable resources that you can point to, okay? And again, this is why one of the most basic features that Get Oiling has, like if you were to be at our lowest plan possible that doesn't have all of the amazing, you know, capabilities and bells and whistles, you still have one of the most valuable assets available to you to have in your business and that is an easily shareable piece of information. You sign up for Get Oiling, you put in your While member number, you make a couple of specific changes that you may or may not want to make, it can just be fine right out of the box. You send people to your website. You invite them personally on the phone, hey, go to this address. I just made a website for my business, come check it out. It could be as simple as that. You don't have to overthink the invite. And then you get them to look at that information. There are videos on there, they're Young Living approved, right? It's compliant. And then if they want to go off and learn more, they can click off. And when they click off to Young Living, your Young Living member number is right there. Now you don't need to count on that page being the thing that seals the deal for you, because you still remember, have to follow up and close. But make it simple, right? You will eventually, as you start to grow and become more confident in this process, you will want to step up your game. If you want to go silver and beyond, you want to go beyond platinum and, you know, road to royal, you have to commit to being the person in the front of the room. Now at that point, you want to be as quickly as possible, being the one giving the presentations, being the one whose voice is on the video. But just to start, if you're brand new, understand that the most duplicable thing that you can do is point to something. Because you want people to know that this is easy, because all they have to do is point to something too and then follow up and ask for a decision, right? Does that help, April?
Absolutely. It definitely does help, it definitely breaks it down, because that is where the problem I see happening to many of us is not knowing what pattern in order to follow and understanding what we should be prioritizing for ourselves. So that's also working efficiently with the steps of action that we're taking with new people we want to bring on.
Yeah, and I would encourage any of you, if you're a Get Oiling member, to go and go to Share My Site, the button in the top right-hand corner of the page when you're logged in, and click on my site link. Open it up, scroll through it, right? If you're not sharing that with people, you really should be, because it's a really simple thing that you can do that will help you to get those results. Over time, you're going to improve the things, the aspects of this process, right? Like you're going to develop your own voice, your own confidence, your own knowledge so that you can share your own story more effectively. But don't let not having the ideal, perfect thing in place stop you from taking the actions that need to be taken. Because if you don't start, you won't ever build the momentum. And if we're always just thinking that, well, I mean, I'm new and I don't really know that much, is that how you want everyone that you introduce that would really love the blessing of financial freedom? Do you want them to feel that way too, right? Like is that something you want to see duplicating? Is that the impact that you really want to make? Yeah, so do you have any other questions around that or anything else, April, while I've got you here? And by the way, those of you who are here live, raise your hand if you want to come out and ask me questions, please do that. Would super love to work with any of you guys here. Go ahead, April.
I did have one question. My question was, I noticed that someone had visited my site and they had left their email. I don't know, I guess there's some type of campaign lead that I see through the back office. However, I don't understand how the campaign works. I know that I received her response to the email, but I don't know what was sent to her.
Oh, that's actually, that's a really easy thing to find. So here, let me make sure I'm logged into a demo account so I can do this properly. There we go. Okay, I'm going to share my screen here. Okay. Okay, so can you see the dashboard here?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so we're going to go to, so this is a particular contact that you have, right? Right, so you're going to go to Manage and then you're going to find that contact. Okay, and this obviously, these are not actual, these aren't actual contacts. This is a demo account, so let's just say that we pull up this guy, Test. Great. And so what you can see here is the person's information. You can also have information over here that either the system logs or that you log. And then over here in Past Actions, you'll actually see what emails they've clicked on and what they've opened. Now obviously, Mailinator, that's not, that's not going to work. Let me see if I've got one in here so you can actually see what that looks like. But yeah, if you go, if you go over right now to your, well, at least recently acted contacts, okay, visited website, this might work. Here we go, Past Actions. See? These are the instances where this person has opened emails. So if you ever want to see what they've opened, this is where you go. And you can also see which campaigns they're on and what day of the campaign they have received up to. So this particular campaign has seven, seven days in it and he's been through all seven of those. You could also from here, add them to another campaign if you wanted to.
Thank you, awesome.
Sure, of course. Alright. Let me stop my share here and come back. Alright, cool. I thought I saw a hand raised, but it looked like it went down. Are you guys being shy? Alright, did you have, I mean, April, by all means, if you have more questions, keep them going. And then if anyone else wants to pop on, raise your hand, let me know, don't be shy.
I'm all set, thank you kindly.
Yes, of course, of course, thank you for coming on. Alright. Okay, fabulous. Alright, Stacy says, "Love the idea of a whole class on ways to invite." Yeah, absolutely, that is something that could be done. I know that you've got leaders in your company, you know, who are currently high-ranking, who do trainings on things like that. You may have an upline that's done something like that. I would definitely recommend that you consult those resources as well that are more catered specifically to how Young Living works. I can talk to you from an expert's perspective in general about best practices, industry-specific, but when we start getting into the finer points, then that's where you're going to want to consult with an upline. However, I will say this, the stuff that works for the rest of the industry works for Young Living too, and actually perfectly well. Duplication is all about simplifying what you do. It's about making the processes that you follow simple. And duplication is everything you want in this business, right? So yeah, so you want to make sure that the processes that you're following are simple. You want to make sure that the resources and that the process that you follow to share a resource is simple, right? You want to point to something. Because you can teach another person to point really easily, right? And it's really easy to teach 20 people to point, right? That's the thing. And if you don't love the resource that you're pointing to, it doesn't matter. You can make another one eventually, but keep sharing until you make that other one that you feel is better, if that makes sense. Okay, well, since you guys are being super shy, I'm going to come over to my email here and start going through some of the questions that we received. Ooh, wait, no, there you go. First priority, if you're here, I'm going to talk to you first. Cheryl says, "Texting campaigns, is there a way to set up texting campaign where prospects can opt into a campaign with a one-word answer?" Yeah, absolutely, let me show you. If I can share my screen, okay. Perfect. Okay, so what you do is you're going to go under Contacts, you're going to go to Settings. You're going to go to Campaigns. And when you create your campaign, this text and keyword is how you do that, right? So you get to, so let's just say that you wanted to have that IPA campaign. Oops. IPA is the text and keyword, we're also going to name the campaign IPA. And then this is, I think John L. is the name of this account. And we're going to call, it's going to make this text only right here. This is where you choose whether this is a text that goes out over the course of days or over the course of minutes. So if you want to just blast everything out pretty quickly, you would do the second one, for this one for sure. Make sure that says Enable and hit Create. And then you create a new message. So then you're, you know, IPA, Day 1. And then you add whatever you want to add. Pick an image if you want to use an image. And the thing is, is when you do a text message, you could put it up here in the subject line. And you could also have something in the body here as well, but if it's beyond the certain number of characters, which I don't recall specifically how many it is, it's in the, you know, neighborhood of 100 or so, standard, then it'll actually provide a link that they can click off to to read the remainder of the message on sort of a webpage. If it's just short, you could just slap it all down here, add the message, choose whether they get it right away. And then of course, you add additional ones and you could make it a day after, two days after, and so on. Did that help Cheryl, that make sense? So that's what you do. So in that case, for that campaign, you would text IPA to your Get Oiling number and then you would be on that campaign immediately. And you would be tagged in the Contact Manager with IPA in that case. Great question. Ooh, hey Jen, am I feeling techie today? I don't know, I think I've had enough coffee, but I can help you with that particular question you've got. Let me see, just to follow up with yours Cheryl, can we create an ongoing one where the text, let's say when they're ready for the next text? So it is ongoing, what I just showed you. So you can choose to, and I recommend this, if you're creating a texting campaign, have one that sends out immediately, so that's Day 0, right? Then the number one would be the following day. So Day 1 is technically the next day after they have signed up for that campaign. And then you could do a Day 2, Day 3, or you could space it out and maybe do every three days. Or if you wanted to just do, you know, like a little check-in once a week or something, it could be, you know, once every seven days. So yeah, they, and it's not necessarily whether they're ready for it, it's just going to be, that's what happens next. Now, if you wanted to, if you wanted to kind of make this multi-step, so if you're ready for Step 2, text the, reply with the word Coach or replay with the word Roses or whatever you wanted to do, then you could have a second campaign. So you can actually, this is kind of cool. You create that text-in campaign and let's just say that you want to allow them an opportunity to opt in to more information. Maybe this is an indicator for you that they are very interested in getting more information about a particular topic that you have set that campaign up for. Then they can text in as a response to that campaign that you've created that they're opted into. They could text in a keyword to launch another campaign. So you could just keep them on an endless string of campaigns if you want to, by a text. Alright, Jen, you have a question about using a YouTube video link to a page. How do you ensure that you do not get the share on the top of the video? Okay, so I know that for absolute certain, you can, on a service, a paid service like Vimeo or Wistia, you can absolutely remove that. I am not 100% confident that you can on YouTube. If you want to make sure that a piece of content that you've created that you are going to put into a particular place, you want it to be unlisted, right? So it's not showing up on your public channel. Or you would make it private to where someone would only be able to access it if they had an email address that you have assigned. So if it's unlisted, only people with the link will have it or people who visit the page that you have a video embedded on. Jen, if you would like to come out and chat with me, I would love to walk through this a little further, voice-wise, just to make sure that we are communicating. Just pop me a little message over here in the chat and let me know that you're good with that and I'll bring you out. Okay, Debbie says, "Is there a way to set up a page for your downline team of their own that they can send people to?" Actually, yes, there is Debbie, and I'm going to show you what that looks like real quick. Alright, so what you do, if you want to, let me just go back to the dashboard here. So if you want to create a page for someone in your organization, maybe someone's just gotten started and the idea of getting a marketing system might just feel a little overwhelming to them and they're just, they're just not really that ready yet. And that's okay. What you do is you go over here to Leg Builder Links and you create a link. And this is where you put the information in. And that's, and so you can actually choose, you know, what's the website theme you want to use? Is it, you know, Healthy Homes, Dietary Oils? These are all gorgeous. And remember, I said at the beginning, if you want to look at your website and see what other people experience, I mean, if you have it set up so there's, and you can, you know, you can change this around, you've got your bio there. You've got your upcoming events, if you want to put them there. You've got an Essential Oils video that actually clicks off. Cool, right? You've got more information, this is all about Young Living. It's telling the story and sharing it for you. These are clickable, Digestive Support Blend, look at that, it's popping right off to the Young Living website. And if you wanted to add to cart, it would then take them to a page where if they checked out, they would be checking out with you. Or in the case of this Leg Builder link, if you wanted to set this up, it would be a thing that your downline could share, if you put their information in. And then you get all of this here. See, all this, it's so much about all the products and the different starter kits and what are the differences? You don't have to know all the answers to all of this stuff, guys. It's all right here, just share your site. I mean, somebody asked you a question, hey, that's a really great question. Let me show you where you can point and click to find out more information from the resource that's more credible than me. I share this stuff, I love it, but I don't know everything. And being able to say, "I don't know everything", is one of the most comfortable and duplicable things that you can do in this business. Alright, cool. I hope that helps. Oh, sorry about that Wendy. Would love to have you come out on a future date. Okay, I did one yesterday from a landing page. They enter the info and it takes them to a page where the video is. The YouTube link shows the share in the upper right-hand side. Okay. Jen, tell you what, shoot me an email about this. And I will, because this is a little, you know, techie and off-platform, we'll work together on this, okay? Shoot me an email and I will let you know whatever way that we might be able to best use YouTube. I recommend though, if you want to really gate access to video information and that's really the direction that you're going in and you want to protect that, that you use a service like Vimeo or Wistia. But there could be a way to use YouTube and we can explore that together. Okay. Good question. "How does one change the image at the top header? Must it be done, must it be one of the preset headers?" Actually, April, if you go to your Customize My Site menu, then you can actually change out and put whatever you want in. Let me, let's see. Cheryl also asks, I'm going to show you just a second, April, how you can change that. "What video should we watch to learn how to make our team resource page? I'm wanting to create a page for our team with training, etc., where they click to, but it needs a password to access, not visible to the public." I am pretty sure that this is in the 90 Day Challenge, Week 7. There is a table of contents if you want to look and just make sure and verify, but it's somewhere around there, Week 7. And there's two different ways to do it. Number one would be a password-protected blog post. So if you enable your blog in Get Oiling, when you write a post, you can actually choose to have that post password-protected. It's not going to show up anywhere. And the only people that are going to be able to see the information are the people who have that password. And the other way is to use a Get Oiling custom page where you can build out however you'd like, if you want it, you know, a video here. If you want it to, you know, a video here and information here and all this, you know, it's very customizable, very pretty. You would make that an, what is it, an unlisted? It's, it has to be published, of course, for people to see it. But, but there's a setting where you can choose to not have it visible. And all of that information is going to be in that training in the 90-day challenge. Okay, so in terms of the Leg Builder link, actually, I don't believe that the information for you is going to show up on your teammates' Leg Builder link. Just so you know, what I would do Becky is I would go to the, I would go and test it out in your account. So just create a Leg Builder link and then copy and paste it in a new window when you're logged out, see what that looks like. And then the other option is, I mean, you can, at the, I think the basicest, like most basic level for GetOiling, it's really affordable and they get half off their first month when you refer them. Okay. The password protected blog post, they can, I mean, if you're talking about a video that's shareable, that's not protected, like if it's on a free platform like YouTube, that's not something that you necessarily have a it's not something that you have a lot of control over. However, I mean, we want to trust that people are going to be good people and are not going to violate trust. So we have to kind of draw out some kind of line there and not be too worried, right? About whether people are sharing things. Now, if you are charging people for the receipt and review of information, then you do want to make sure that you have those permissions in place just to keep integrity. Okay, now I promised I was going to go back over here and show you how to change those header images on your website. You could have a carousel of beautiful photos. Now, it's already there. It's already uploaded for you. If you don't feel techie or you don't care about personalizing it, you can leave it and it's professional and it's gorgeous. But if you want to take things to the next level, you want to brand yourself, then there is a really cool thing that you can do. If I can come back over here. All right, fantastic. So where you want to go is down here under my site, you're going to go customize my site. Okay, so you're going to have your member number, you're going to have the header name. Website theme, you can customize this. Hit customize. And this is where you add your website photos. So you saw that photo was up at the top. You can put something else here. If you can add your image library, which as, as you are using images on your GetOiling website, you're going to have this stuff show up. So I'm going to I want to select this one. It's not perfect for that, that slider, obviously. You want to use a wide image for that slider. But I'm going to save changes. And then I'm going to go and refresh this site. And there's that image that I just showed you guys. Actually, I don't have this in like the full wide resolution either. Let me see. Yeah, so you can actually add a really large image there. And that learn more buttons right there. So you can click off and it's really cool. He did a really beautiful job building these pages. Okay. Back to our questions. Got some really good ones today. So April, that is the answer to your question. You don't have to only use the preset images. You can go add whatever ones you please. I definitely recommend that you have, you know, some of your own of you, right? If you want to really make the most of branding yourself and putting yourself out there online, go get glamorous and have a photo shoot and have a couple that are in like wide format form for that slider. You know, so there's a pretty picture of you and maybe you could put some text over it. Like there's a lot of cool stuff that you can do and it's not really that hard. When I first started doing this, there were tools like Canva and Word Swag and these cool apps and stuff that you can really easily put, you know, text over images and make them pretty, you know, if you're not a, you know, graphic designer, which I am definitely not. But there are tools that make it look like you are. So a lot of cool options there for you. All right, let's see. Having trouble understanding what happens when I send an event? It appears that I'm getting very little responses. I discovered that when the invite, the invitee receives the message, they click the link to go to the event page. Amelia, do you want to come out and join me live? Cause we had, we had a great time the first time you did that. Just pop a message. All right, cool. I'm going to bring you out. Jen says she did a photo shoot and it was fun. Photo shoots are so much fun and you don't have to like, you know, you can go all out for it if you want to, but you could also just go out with a friend or a teammate and just take turns, you know, taking pretty pictures of each other. You use a filter, you know, add images and whatever, like it's, make it fun. Make it fun, make it you. All right. Okay, Cheryl, I actually regarding the font color on a blog, I'm not sure about that. If you were to send an email to info@getoiling.com when Greg is back, which I believe will be tomorrow. I think he can, he can answer that for you. That is something that I don't know. See, I don't know everything techie about the system, you guys. I came here as, you know, as a marketing expert. So I'm, I'm not really necessarily the tech and graphic design. All right, Amelia, my dear, I'm bringing you out. Let's talk about your events.
Hello, Ashley.
It's so nice to see you, hear you. Well, see you if you can come out, if you want to enable your video.
I don't mind doing that. I don't know how to. I see the mute button. Let's see. Oh, I don't see the camera. I don't, I don't see it. But anyway, I sent out an event and do you see my page? Do you see it at all?
Let me actually, let's see, is it allowing you to, to, to share your screen? Do you see a button for share?
No, it says, raise hand and questions.
Okay, here's, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to promote you to a panelist.
Hello.
All right, are, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so now you should be able to see, since I promoted you to panelist, you should be able to share your screen. There's a little green share button down at the bottom.
Got it.
And, and do you see that now? Ooh, fabulous. Yes, we got you. Okay. All right, so tell me what, tell me what we're dealing with.
So, okay. So I created an event and, well, let me let you view it. This is the event. And when, I noticed when people were getting it, it takes them to a page that says register. And so when they go to the page that says register, it's not really letting them say, yes, no, or maybe.
Okay, will you, can you click that register button right now and let's see what happens?
That one, that's it, yes.
Okay.
Makes them register. Oh wait, that's not what it, that's not.
This is, this is what should be showing up.
Yes, okay. Things like when I did it, I don't know, yesterday, it was driving me crazy because it, it just looked, it sent like just a register. It didn't say yes, no, or maybe.
Oh, okay.
Well, maybe, I don't know. Now I'm confused what happened.
It is okay, it's okay. By the way, beautiful job on that photo. This sounds like a lovely class.
Yes, and if I could get people to come, now I have to, I cheated a little bit because my daughter is like a techie person. So she, she created the, the flyer or whatever you want to call it. Yeah, she did that. So, but she was the one that even pointed out to me, she said, Mom, when people click register. Oh, 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 no, no, no. I know what happened. Okay. Let me, let me go back. Okay, see, because there's only three people coming and that's me, my daughter.
Okay.
For my team. And I'm, I'm like, I'm not sure what they're seeing. So how can I, okay, how can I show? How can I see what they're seeing? I know we just viewed it, an event, but.
Well, that, that is, that is, that is how you see what they're seeing. So if you want to see what your webpage looks like to a prospect, you hit view, you know, view my website, or in this case, you hit view event. So this is what your prospect receives when you share your event with them. Now, what I would suggest in this instance is if you see down at this attendee list, if you click actions right there.
Yes.
Uh huh.
Okay.
All right, so we want to, I think there was one person that, that you know is, is registered here of the 80 people who were invited. So what we're going to do is, so is this, did you invite 80 people? Is this correct?
Yes, I did.
Perfect. Good job. All right, so over on actions.
Yes.
Click actions. All right, and then what I would do is you could do mail. I, I would say mail. Are you texting all these folks?
Well, some of them, I don't have their email, so I, but I, like you see the one that says Kristy Acosta. She has her email there. So if I would, I don't mind just emailing them, but I was trying to.
Okay. Okay, got you. So, so click mail.
Okay.
Perfect. All right, and so then what we're going to do is in the subject line, you could say something, when, when is this event? Is it next week?
Wednesday, uh huh.
Okay, so what you could do is say, did you get this? Question mark, or did you hear about this? Question mark, something like that, that sounds really personal. That sounds, you know, like you're asking them a question directly. Questions and, and just quick things like this tend to get people to pay attention. So then down here, we can get a little less formal. So you could say, hi, contact first name.
Okay.
And then you can delete that. Well, actually here, just hit enter in front of the P for please. And we'll, we'll include the wine and wellness Wednesday in there. So you don't have to worry about deleting it. But yeah, just hit, hit enter there after the contact first name exclamation mark. All right, and we're going to delete that please right there. And basically you just want to say, you know, I sent you an invitation, you know, whenever it was yesterday, a few days ago. And I hadn't heard back from you and I wanted to make sure you got it.
Okay, yes. Okay.
And then I would hit enter down a couple of, a couple of spaces. And then, you know, then, then here I would, I would ask, I would ask you first Amelia, you know, to, to put some, you know, just general basic light, lighthearted sounding information about what you're going to do. So, you know, we're going to have, you know, we're going to have, have wine and talk about, you know, we're going to wine and hors d'oeuvres and talk about how you can improve such and such thing. You get where I'm going with that, right? Like, so just make it sound like you were going to send a quick message to a friend, which you are, just a lot of them at once. You know, so, hey, so and so, sent you an invitation, wanted to make sure you got it, haven't heard from you yet. And I think that you would be sad if you missed this. What I mean?
Yes.
So if, if you send an invite out, it's, you know, possible that things just get lost in the inbox, right? And, and you know, some of us just miss our emails. So feel free, if you don't see people RSVPing, just say one way or another, whether or not they're coming, send another email and say, hey, you know, I know you, you might be busy, just do me a quick favor. Click, you know, click the, the link below and let me know if you'll be able to make it.
Got it. Okay, and now I, I just remembered, when they click this, this, this event invite, that's when they, it's just a little box. It doesn't take them to that email that, that, the, the one you just now saw. It doesn't take them to that event. It takes them to a register page without the word maybe, no, or yes.
Interesting. Well, here, here's how we test this then. So we're gonna, let's, let's just close out of this. Go ahead and hit that X up there. All right. Let's go back to your event page.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Go ahead and click that. Okay, so oh, let's, let's go back to the management page.
Okay.
Yeah, event setup, just the tab up there to the left.
Some of my stuff is covered up. Okay. Go to the left.
Oh, the, the event setup tab that you have up there. It's okay. No, up at the very top, you see, you know how you have tabs in a browser? Right? Event setup. Or just go back to your dashboard and then we're going to click on the setup for your event.
Oh, I see. This thing keeps.
Yes, yeah, there it is.
Okay, event setup.
Yeah, there you go. All right, so we go back down here to the attendee list and we're going to hit actions.
Okay.
All right. Now we're going to, so in that, you see where it says filter 80 contacts?
Yes.
Okay. Type your name. Because you're going to test this. You're going to send this to yourself first.
Okay.
There you are. Fantastic. All right, now hit filter.
Okay, oh, how about, because I put my whole email, I should just put my name.
Yes, there you are.
Okay, I don't know what, let me just do Ivy. That's my daughter.
Okay. Huh, okay, so there's, there's something up here that I don't know if, you know, something happened when the event invites were sent initially or what have you, but how about this? When we're done today, just shoot me an email, we'll go through a screen share together and, and figure out what's going on here and and go from there. Okay?
Sounds good.
Awesome. All right, just send me a quick email. All right. I am going to I'm going to go back to sharing my screen so I can answer some questions here. Amelia, definitely do please give me that, give me that email. Let me know when you've got some time to chat later today and we'll, we'll troubleshoot this and make sure we're good.
Okay, oh, can you do it right after this one or are you?
I, yeah, yeah, I can.
Okay, we'll do that. All right, thank you.
All right. Okay. All right, so Stacy asked a good question about using those inserts. So, you know, that contact first name and event invite and stuff like that. So here's how you do this. I'm going to go over to, and actually anywhere that you're sending a person, potentially personalizable message, right? So if this is in your campaigns or it's in your saved replies, or if it's in your, your, your one-off emails that you send to people, there is one little field and I will show you where it is. All right, so let's just say we're going to okay, we're going to email. Well. These are all like just test emails anyway, but all right, so we're just going to go to this one. We're going to go to, oops, let me move this. We're going to hit mail. You can also hit this directly off of the, the contact manager. And then this little guy right here, if you want to add a personalized tag. So if you wanted to plug in your name, member number, the company names or full name, first name, this is the most often used one, contact first name is right here. And, and then of course there are tags that the system will apply in good, you know, and, and when it has good reason to, right? So if you're going to manage your events and you want to send an invitation. Oops. Action mail. Action, mail. Oops. Remember, guys, when you do this? Make sure it's to the selected contacts. Alright, cool. So this, oh, this actually doesn't have the link on it, this particular instance, but you get it. Sometimes it'll do that. Alright. Let's see. Jan would like to know when we use a simple landing page versus creating a custom page with landing page. Alright, so, okay, so there's two different styles. I think I get what you're asking me, Jan. So there's two different ways that you can have landing pages, actually three technically, ways that you can utilize a landing page with your GetOiling site. The first way actually is under customize my site. You can actually choose before someone actually views your GetOiling website, which we've talked about a little bit today. You can actually have them be required to enter their name and their email address or phone number before they move on to the next step. That's optional, you can have that set up there. You also have, inside the contacts manager, there is landing pages. There's a link that says landing pages. And that is where you can very simply create, or you could customize an existing landing page. Or you could just use one that's already done. Or you could start from scratch. It's up to you. And then your third option is to use the page builder feature, which is under my site and then the link settings. And then you go to custom pages. In terms of when you would use one versus the other is really a matter of taste for the second two. So obviously, the first option is something that's just on your website where they can't go and see anything on your website until they've opted in. That's something that you can do. But for landing pages, so this is when you would use a landing page to say, offer up an article or a series of recipes or a video or something that's more content marketing based. You would use one of these two things. And it's just really a matter of preference. It's how you want it to look, really. There's not a lot of customization, comparatively speaking, in the standard landing pages, which is the landing page link under contacts. But there is immense customization in a custom page, which could be made into a landing page. It could also be made into an article or however you wanted it to work. So it's, yeah, it's just personal taste. I hope that helps. If you enjoy the challenge and you may also be someone who really wants things to look a certain way, you use custom pages. You want to change the colors of fonts and you want to, you know, put a big, pretty image over here and the text over here. And maybe you want, instead of your landing page, which is typically just some text or, sorry, we're mirroring this right now, aren't we? So some text and you're opt-in boxes with a button. And then maybe an about me underneath it. If you've allowed for that, that's what shows up on a landing page. Custom pages, look however you want to. And the lead forms don't show up on the page. You actually have to click the button to get them. A little more complicated. There is a full training on those types of pages as well as landing pages in the 90 Day Challenge recordings under the help button in your back office, you guys. Okay, made a link builder for a friend in my info and picker on it. Can I customize the site and change to her info? Her member number populates on enrollment. Becky, this answer is for you. And in this instance, I would say if your friend is not going to be getting a GetOiling site of their own and you want to help your friend with the leg builder feature and you want it to feel more, well, less customized to you at least. Because if you change the about me section for the purpose of this, then everywhere on your site, your about me is going to be, well, not about you anymore. So what some people do in this instance is under the about me section, they might make it about their team, you know? So this is our team name, this is who we are. And maybe there's, you know, pictures and some information about the respective people on the team who may have a leg builder link that you link to there in that about section. So that is one way that you can do that. If you want more customization for your friend, highly recommend just inviting her to get a GetOiling account. Obviously, our features are going to vary based on the level that you start at. But if it's just a matter of sharing, being able to point and share a simple website that tells the story, even if you don't know the whole story yet yourself, then I believe our cheapest plan's like $9 a month or something. So it's worth it to be able to not have to say all the things, remember all the things and so on. Alright, we got more questions. We've got about five minutes left before we hit the top of the hour. So do go ahead, pop in with any questions. Anything else you'd like me to fill up this last five minutes with to chat with you guys about explain or show? Happy to do it. And this includes an invitation to come out and chat directly. If you want to, just raise your hand and let me know that you would like to. And of course, submit your questions. Make sure I didn't miss anything over here in the comments. Really, really glad to have you guys on today. Do make sure, let me see. Yeah, do make sure that Amelia, Jan, send out a message to me directly and we'll work through those things together. Awesome, alright, good. I'm glad you did. Really, really grateful to you guys for spending this time with us, for investing in yourselves to grow your business. I really believe that this industry in general, right? And this company certainly is a blessing to this world, right? You know, I have my own personal story of how I was able to turn my own life around when things were not looking very promising for me as a single mom of a two-year-old back then. She just turned 12. This made things possible for me when it didn't seem like they would be. And I will always, always be an advocate for this industry and for everyone in it. Because if you choose to do the work, man, sometimes the work is hard. We have to evolve ourselves very quickly to really kind of meet the needs, the demands of leadership that are required in order for us to win in this business and to really change a lot of lives. So just seeing you guys here, committing your time, showing up in the middle of the day, on Valentine's Day no less, to figure out how to, you know, get the questions answered, get things done so that you can go about the business of changing lives. It just says a lot from my heart. Really appreciate you guys. Alright, no more questions? Really, guys? Anything else you want to see before we go? I'd introduce you to my puppy, but I think he's, oh, he's taking a nap. Alright, cool. Well, I definitely appreciate all you guys. And if you have any other questions? So next week, I think, and this is not set in stone just yet, but I think next week, we may do a, you know, sharing best practices. You know, so how to share, what to share and so on. So this would encompass the topic of social media to a degree. There is an attraction marketing based training in the 90 Day Challenge. Highly recommend, just look at the table of contents and you can see where it is. Attraction marketing is a term that's important for you guys to get familiar with as you are looking to step up your game. If you're brand new and you just want to like, start figuring out where your feet go, don't even worry about it yet. But those of you who are ready to take things to that next level, make those customizations. That's definitely a concept worth exploring. Because setting yourself apart and really investing in the brand that is you, which is ultimately the thing that influences people to make the decision to join Young Living. It's not Young Living that does it for them. It's you first, then Young Living does it, right? You all know, like, the person that introduced you was the bridge, right? And there's, you have to have trust to cross a bridge. And so building your brand is an important thing to consider. But that's another day. So I think that next week, we will talk about sharing, for sure. Does the 90 Day Training build on itself or can we jump around? That's a good question. So it was designed for you to start at the beginning. And there's a lot of cumulative information. There is a lot of self-referential things that we've covered previously. So each training doesn't necessarily start off as something that's independent. You know, we talk about what we covered the week before and we build upon those concepts. If you, I would recommend that you give it a shot. Nothing is so complicated that you can't jump around. But just be mindful of that, that they aren't independent trainings. They were definitely a part of a series. And if you watch them and you follow through them, you will actually find yourself just going through the correct motions, getting your system set up optimally and then also launching a business blitz, which is really at the core of every six-figure income and beyond in this industry is a period of concentrated focus and massive action taken over a specific period of time. And so you can learn how to do that while also getting those fun little tech pieces in place with GetOiling and that 90 Day Challenge if you start from the beginning and go through. But if you don't have the time or you don't have the focus, get it? You want to go dig in straight for a concept, then just go to that table of contents and pop around. Although I would recommend to everyone to just absolutely watch the first two. Because what that's going to teach you is why you should do a challenge in the first place, which is the most profitable thing you can do for your business, and repeat over and over again.